We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on December 19th, 2023, to order at 3:02 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda on items other than public hearings. Council, uh, public, on items other than public hearing speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. And if you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing there are no speakers, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and welcome to the last meeting of 2023. It wouldn't be the last meeting if it wouldn't, if I couldn't bring you an agenda change, so I'm gonna end it well. Well, we actually have good news in this. I'd like to pull resolution 1065 from consideration today. Staff received word that we're actually gonna receive additional funding potentially in the Texas Water Development Board Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Program, which is good news, increasing from about $15 million, potentially up to $20 million. And so we also have an extended application deadline with Texas Water Development Board until January 29th, the next year. So we're gonna pull this resolution and bring it back to you at your January 16th meeting with an increased application request. Next, I wanted to highlight a couple of employee recognition items. We've had several city events recently and want to recognize the teams that were involved. But first, I don't know if y'all noticed when you walked in the room, but it is quite festive in here. And wanted to say a special thanks to the city secretary's office and particularly Michelle and her team. It just looks amazing in here, and they're responsible for all the decorations. So in terms of employee recognitions, first, I wanted to highlight the employee appreciation event we held at the Cameron Park Zoo recently. I know I saw a couple council members out and about. We've got some images popping up here on the screen in a minute. This was actually our first time hosting an employee appreciation event after hours, and we were really pleased to have more than 1,000 city employees and their families enjoy the Wild Lights display at the zoo. Want to say a special thanks to the employee appreciation team for putting on a great event. We really have a great group of people that care about the city's culture, and this is one of the ways it lives out. A lot of our team members that put on this event come from Parks and Rec certainly, and they were supported by team members at the zoo as well as a committee of folks who helped plan out our employee appreciation events. I'd like to say a special thanks to those groups now. With applause.
First, the zoo is so awesome. To everyone that has made that event be something that's available to our community is amazing, but really glad that we were able to celebrate our staff. Definitely deserves the appreciation that was extended at this event, and what an amazing place to get to host something like that. So Bradley, I'm really appreciative to you of hosting this event for our employees, and again, can't say enough good thanks about the team we have here in Waco.
Thank you all. Last week, we also had a great event at the airport and celebrated the ribbon cutting on our $9 million airport terminal modernization project. I just want to say a special thanks again to the airport team. That was quite an effort to get the project to opening right before the end of the year here. For the viewing public, if you hadn't seen the airport, it looks phenomenal, and the investment in public art in particular really sets it off. We unveiled our floor-to-ceiling renovation project. It includes four new art pieces as well as our new Waco Regional Airport logo, so wanted to say a special thanks to, again, Parks for, you know, we draft them into a lot of different things that aren't parks, but they're fun, and that's why we bring them in. We also brought in the communications team. You'll know, y'all probably would notice that everything was on brand, everything is color-coordinated, even down to the outfits that some of our staff wore. It's a really well-done event by airport communications and Parks, so thank y'all.
Bradley, I will say this. There are no, we can just echo all of that and give just a ridiculous amount of praise about how well this turned out. I know that it took lots of, lots of, lots of work for various staff members and departments, but can I tell you Waco is proud right now?
Uh huh.
It is beautiful, number one. It is just everything that you want to experience and had no idea you needed to experience in an airport, to see amazing pieces of art, to see floor-to-ceiling representation of the city of Waco. It is welcoming, it is inviting, it did exactly what, it understood the assignment and got it completed. Again, shout out to all the staff members that helped make that day special. It really was beautiful. Two, the convention center and the CBB team ready to sell their wares right there, and the people were ready to buy those wares that day. So I was super excited about that. We know we have more steps to do with the rest, securing a restaurateur, but those steps are in process, and I, like I said, I was peacock proud that day and, and, and super excited. I don't know how you gonna schedule tours of an airport the way regulations are set up, but it needs to happen. So if you haven't seen it, call H O L.
Yeah, I just echo everything that was said. I think our whole city is buzzing about how this turned out. I had a lot of comments after the newspaper published the pictures in the newspaper, and it is so beautiful, and this is really the first impression, or the second or third or fourth or fifth impression we want our visitors coming in for tourism or business to see, and also just an amazing, warm, inviting space for our own residents who are flying in and out of Waco. So something that we can all be proud of, and by all of us, I mean this whole city is proud of it. So to every individual who worked hard and strategically to make this the product that it is, it's something that we can all be proud of as a, as a team that we have this beautiful airport now. So thanks to everyone.
Comments, very encouraging. And one more encouraging note for staff recognition, I want to recognize two of our employees today. I believe one's in the audience and one couldn't make it, but we'll still talk about her and brag on her. These two employees recently graduated from the Emerging Leaders Academy on December 8th. Want to say a special thanks and congratulations to Mari Hernandez, who works in human resources as our risk coordinator, as well as Jeremy Pacina, who's our interim economic development director, on their graduation. Students in the Emerging Leaders Academy attended nine sessions over a five-month period and had an opportunity to learn from city managers, directors, fire chiefs, and professors that are associated with the University of Kansas, which is one of the leading public administration schools in the country, while also connecting with their peers, like-minded peers and colleagues, that they'll be able to have those relationships for their entire careers. I do want to say a special thanks to Jeremy and congratulations because out of all the folks that attended, all the attendees, he was actually selected as the cohort speaker, kind of like the class president.
What?
To speak, yeah, isn't that cool? To speak and represent the class on their collective achievements and growth at the end of the session. The Emerging Leaders Academy is something new to our organization and was certainly excited to be represented by two great emerging leaders in our organization. We look forward to being a part of that organization in the future as well. Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks, Mari. Mari's gonna watch this later, hopefully. We'll get her a clip. Today, council, you have six public hearings on your agenda. Galen Price, our Director of Housing and Community Development, will cover the first one in the business session, and Clint Peters, Director of Development Services, will provide an overview of the planning public hearing items also during the business session at 6 o'clock. We expect that our work session time will be filled up with the other work sessions, so he'll be covering planning items in the business session at 6. We have 24 resolutions on the agenda today. The first one I wanted to highlight is Resolution 1052, which approves home and ARPA funding agreements for a total amount of $1 million for construction costs in support of 10 transitional housing units for individuals or families in particular who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. We'll hear more details on this project during the work session when we hear from Major Taylor from the Salvation Army, but just wanted to call your attention to that Resolution 1052 is associated with the Salvation Army work session. And then lastly, wanted to highlight Resolution 1063, which awards a contract to Texas Materials Group for our 2022 Street Preservation Phase Four Modified Thin Overlay Mix Project, which is a street maintenance effort in an amount not to exceed $3.5 million. This project will cover multiple council districts, work in multiple council districts that you're seeing on the map now, and is anticipated to start early in 2024 with face repairs and surface preparation, and then final surfacing will be completed by November 2024. We have one ordinance on the agenda today, and it's a second reading, and with that, that concludes my report, and I'll take any questions or comments from the council at this time.
Any questions?
I just had a couple of comments on a couple of the other resolutions. One of them is like number 6, 7, and 8, which is Resolution 1049, 1050, and 1051. We've been seeing a lot of these come through council these last few months of federal funding for home restoration, and I like the way staff is approaching this solution, and particularly Director Price, is he, he's really combining a couple of different federal programs and rifle-shotting these solutions for home rehab, which I think is great. It's in the past, we've kind of sprinkled, sprinkled around in different parts of the city, and in these, I think we're seeing meaningful dollars go to rehab in combining two different programs. So I like the way that's happening. There's three in today's agenda. I think it was three, there's been three or four, five over the last few months, but I appreciate Director Price's efforts in that. I also wanted to talk about number 16, Resolution 1059, and that's a software for our police department. And one of our goals, at least that I've set here in these last couple of years, best-in-class services. And I think in the private sector, you have your organizational goals and organizational success is about the three Ps, product, people, and process. And I know we've got a great product, particularly in the police department here, and we've got some great people led by Chief Victorian and all the officers there, but some of these process issues that we're working on, I think not just in the police department, but in across other city services as well. We're looking at the software programs and the process programs, which I think is very important to get more efficient, to create some opportunities of scale and enhance our productivity. So I applaud that software improvement. And then finally, number 21, Resolution 1064. This is really an attaboy. Every time I see one of these, I feel like you guys are really paying attention to the details here. We're rebuilding a generator and doing some maintenance work on another one at a cost of, I mean, it's a big, it's a big number in and of itself at about 250,000, but we are making the old generators work instead of buying a new one right now. I know that we need to buy a third one there, and I'm scared to ask how much one of those will cost, that wasn't in the detail, but I like the fact that we're looking at ways to be efficient and rehabbing one of those generators, so just wanted to get an attaboy there. But that's all I had. Mayor?
Any questions or comments? All right, the consent agenda includes resolutions 2023, 1044 through 1067. Are there any council items, are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda includes resolutions 2023, 1044 through 1061, except for 1046 because council member, council member board root has filed an affidavit of substantial interest. The next item on the agenda is work session items 2023, 1032 through 1035. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure, Mayor. Be glad to. Work session 1032 is gonna be our first work session. It's discussion of Salvation Army facilities and programs. Want to invite Major Jim Taylor to the table to present, and Clint Peters, I believe, who's very festive today. Either that or he's on-brand with Salvation Army, I can't tell. Doing the most good. Clint Peters doing a great job as our development services director. No, but Major Taylor's gonna be presenting on the Salvation Army's new campus project that's upcoming on the La Salle corridor, and look forward to his briefing to the council today. Jim?
Thank you. I appreciate the fact you said briefings, and I'll try to keep it that way. But I do need to give you a little bit of history in order to get you to where we are today. The Salvation Army's been in Waco since 1891, and for the past 90 years, it's been down here on Webster and Clay between 3rd and 4th Streets. And originally, it was the spiritual home of the Salvation Army, and as the community needs required in more specialized space, then we were able to squeeze a men's shelter and a community kitchen into the building at 4th and Webster. And then in the late 1950s, we purchased property at 12th and Gurley. You see that where it says current church, and that became our new spiritual center for the Salvation Army, which allowed us to then go back to this Webster block here and create other social service opportunities for the Salvation Army. And in fact, at 300 Webster, at one time, that was our Salvation Army thrift store. Well, 4th and Webster was the men's shelter. Then in about 2008, whoop, can't see on that picture, 2008, we purchased the old Waco roller rink, and that became our thrift store. It's down there on the far bottom left corner. It became our thrift store and our social services and our administrative offices. And so the Salvation Army was beginning to find ourselves spread out all over across Waco, and we just really needed to consolidate and find a way to get back to a place where it would be convenient for both clients and staff to access. So I share all that history for you because the Salvation Army has for 132 years shaped and reshaped our properties to meet the demands of our community, and for the last several decades, we've become more and more dislocated. In October 2019, we partnered with the Baylor School of Social Work and conducted a survey of partner agencies, many of which are part of the Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition. It included local leaders, donors, board members, to help determine what the needs were in Waco, not just the Salvation Army, but what were the needs in Waco? And one of the three recommendations from the study was the need to consolidate our services. And by far, the two most dire needs outlined in the study were housing for homeless families and a day shelter for the homeless. And these two elements are centerpieces in the project that I'm talking about. For more than a year, we looked for a location that was large enough to consolidate our services, that included our spiritual services as well as our administrative offices and all of our social services. It had to have good visibility. We wanted it to have good accessibility. We wanted it to be on a bus route. There are a lot of, there are a lot of criteria, checks box, check boxes we are trying to find. We engaged a commercial broker named Bland Cromwell, and he helped us find this location. And RBDR Architects produced for us a site plan, complete with elevations and floor plans for our campus that conforms to the dictates of the special permit that this council granted us in March of 2022. And so with, with that little bit of history, I would like to now go ahead and show you where we are today. So what you see here is the site plan. It's a nine-acre piece of land, and we're using the, I guess you would call about the four and a half acres right off of La Salle for our Salvation Army project. The building that is parallel to La Salle is our core community center, which would have our church as well as our administrative offices in it. And the building that is perpendicular to La Salle is the Center of Hope, which is all of our social services that we provide. You see also some green space there that would have playground for the children, a pavilion where we can have special events in a nice, large, grassy area. So that is the site plan that has been developed by the architects. This is our, the frontage, the elevation of our core community center. This is what you'll see when you drive down La Salle. So to the right will be our administrative offices, and to the left would be the Salvation Army church. This is the floor plan they've developed. The dark green, if you will, is the administrative wing that has all of our administrative offices. And to the right side of the picture, the brown is the sanctuary or the Salvation Army chapel. The purple would be our Sunday school classrooms and fellowship areas. The blue area would be our fellowship hall, and the yellow area is just our public restrooms. So that's the basic floor plan of the Salvation Army Core Community Center. This is our, if you will, our spiritual center for the Salvation Army. This is the Center of Hope. It would be our social service center. What you see in this picture, the top long picture is looking at the entire facade of the front. To the left are our apartment, our family apartments, and to the right would be our community center. You'll see the floor plan in just a minute, but to the right, it'd be the main access into the building. The bottom two pictures are actually the backside of the building. This sidewalk would come from 12th to the building. We'll have a, hopefully have a bus stop there. I've spoken, spoken with the Waco Transit, and they don't see any problem with doing that, but hopefully we'll have a bus stop there, and then people can walk into our center up that sidewalk. This is the floor plan, beginning to the left, the kind of rose color, if you will. Those are 15 family transitional apartments. This is where families who are homeless will be able to reside for, well, up to a year, to a year and a half if necessary, in order to get them to a place where they can be transitioned back into individual, stable living. Some of those apartments have swing rooms, so if it's a large family, we can, and we have the availability to use two apartments for a large family, we can do that. The green space just to the right of that is our single women's shelter. It has 16 beds, and it also has its own shower facilities, laundry facilities, and a lounge that leads out to that smoking area there. The kind of gold color to the top is our community kitchen, where we will still be able to serve our daily meals and serve meals to all the residents that reside at the Center of Hope. The going to the right, that green area to the right would be our social services offices with all of our case managers, so that instead of having to go uptown to see a case manager from Webster, now they'll be able to walk across the hall. The kind of bluish area is our day center for the homeless. That's a 24/7 center, and individuals will be able to come in there and spend the day if they need to. Let's see if I can get the little arrow to work there. Where's the arrow? Right. Well, anyways, there are lockers along the entrance wall that they can put their belongings. They also have laundry facilities. They also have shower facilities. We also have a handicap shower and toilet there. To the right, you see two classrooms. The purpose of those classrooms is so that we can develop ESL or financial management or GED classes, whatever we need to offer to our residents. And then the two offices in between them will be used by partner agencies like BHN, for instance, if they want to come and meet with some of their clients. They can do so there instead of the client having to figure out how to get out to BHN. So we hope to partner with our agent, other agencies like that. Then the purple area is the men's shelter, where it also has, it has 24 beds and a lounge, laundry. All these areas are secure in the sense that the control center, that green, kind of like a hook area, the control center will be able to electronically allow people into the right wing. So if you're a family, you can get buzzed into the family wing, but if you're not a family, you don't get into that wing, right? Because we want to protect them. Same thing with the women's shelter and the men's shelter. The day center for the homeless is available to anybody whenever, so there's not going to be a matter of having to buzz anybody in and out of that room. Also on the green, again, kind of our security, our check-in area, the, I really wish I could get this arrow to work. There it is. That area right there, that is going to be a police reporting station, so that we will have a police presence. I don't know if you can see that. Let me, whoop, that's not what I wanted to do. Okay, well, let's go back up here. There you go. Right there. And so the police will have an entrance right here, and they will have their own office here, but they can also provide security if necessary for the entire facility. And so that was one of the things that was part of the special permit that we wanted to make sure, I want to make sure we pointed out. Down here, this just shows to you, this is the month of October this year and the number, amount of activity that we had just for the month of October compared to the month of October last year in terms of service we gave to the people of our community. You see that we have grocery orders, clothing vouchers, utility assistance, veterans assistance. We have a grant with the Texas Veterans Commission, and so on, and you can, you can read that. And on the right over here is all of our programs and services that the Salvation Army offers year-round here in Waco, and all of those things will be accessed and available through the Center of Hope and the Core Community Center on that one piece of property year-round. And whoops, wrong way. Go on, I guess that's, oh, this is the, our capital campaign, our budget is $20 million on this campaign. That includes a operating endowment, and you can see underneath there funds that are secured thus far. This, this is as of November. Those are the funds that have been secured thus far. So we have about almost $11 million of the $20 million we need. So we're still in need of about $9 million. The Salvation Army will allow us to break ground as soon as we have the money or the pledges for the money. For instance, if somebody wants to pledge three or four years out, as long as we have the money or the pledges, we can begin to do that. And that's just a page, kind of the bullet points that I just finished sharing with you. So that's, that's where we are, Mayor and Council, on this Building Hope campaign and establishing our campus on La Salle.
Any questions or comments for Clint and the major?
Yeah, Major, just briefly, did you mention a construction timeline, or is that dependent on the capital campaign?
It is dependent on the cap, on the capital campaign. We also shared a construction timeline with Mr. Price and his office. It is our hope that by June of '24, we'll have our campaign. If not completed in terms of pledges and money, then it will be close to being completed. The architects have already completed their schematic design. They're working on the design development. Once our headquarters approves that, then they can do the construction drawings and bid it out for work, and so they're hoping that by- And so they're hoping that by late summer, early fall of next year, we should be able to put shovels in the dirt and get moving.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just chime in. Major Taylor, thanks for the presentation. Great. I like that. I think the last time we looked at it, we didn't have those 15 apartments dedicated to the families. I think that's a nice element of this deal. And the fact that it's right there, very close to the veterans' one-stop. And you highlight on this page, this very page, where we have dedicated veterans' beds and services also, very important, and I like to see that in it. It was Gandhi that said, "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." And I think that the city of Waco is being very proactive here, not only in this project, but we see the whole homeless coalition, Central Texas Homeless Coalition that you referred to, all the nonprofits. We just, also the Mission Waco, the Creekside Project that they're working on. And you guys all cooperate and it's a great thing to see. Because these people are hitting a rough patch in their life and we're there to try to help those that are in the margins of society through no fault of their own. And I like the way this deal is headed. So congratulations. Hope we can raise the funds to get, to get going on this. Thanks, Major.
The one thing, if you could go to the kind of layout of the map on La Salle for me, Clinton or Major? That, that one right there. Two, one concern I have is just, you know, the La Salle traffic is fast-paced. And I know that there's probably going to be a lot of folks who are walking. I know we had looked at trying to get the building to the front so that people weren't kind of congregating in front of the building. So one question I had is, is, as you're doing your landscaping design, I don't know if there's a way to do hardy bushes that kind of keep people from getting close to the street and maybe even, you've got these great green spaces in the back. And so if people are coming to gather outside, my hope is that for traffic safety purposes, you can navigate them by both the kind of landscape design as well as policies and procedures to keep people from congregating in the front of the building. Any thoughts around that or policies or ability to achieve that?
Around the, which buildings, just-
Sorry, the La Salle, specifically the front of the building. My hope is that if people are coming to visit your space, and I, I assume that a lot of the folks that are coming are, there's a lot of foot traffic. And so my hope is that people that are coming to visit, and if they are outside, will be on the, in the green space and not congregating on the, on the front, La Salle-facing side of the building.
Okay. So it was, it's intentional that we have two separate buildings. And it's intentional that the service center would be in the back of the property. People should not be needing to come to the Core Community Center or the Administration Office unless they're there for business or for church activities. The rest would be, would go down to the Center of Hope. And that's where they would congregate, but they would congregate inside, not outside. So there, there won't be any congregation going on right there in the parking lot or on the side of the Core Community Center. It would be further down by the Center of Hope.
That's great. That's what I was, that addresses the concern I have and-
And Mayor-
Sorry, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Along with your line, on the 12th Street side, there's a lot of new student housing and homes being built around that area. And I was hoping that you would have a fence or bushes or something to block the view from your facility to the rest of the neighborhood. That's my concern on 12th Street side, not La Salle, because I know that's got to be handled. And there is a lot of traffic on La Salle now. It takes you a long time to, if you don't go to a, a traffic light, it takes you forever now to get across La Salle. But my concern is the view from 12th Street over to the new housing, student housing and homes that they're building out in that block.
So I can respond to that. The special permit that was approved by council back in March had some development requirements. And one of those is screening with a fence and landscaping along 12th Street to do exactly what you're talking about. And then also on the La Salle frontage, it doesn't show on its conceptual plan, but there will be a row of shrubs and trees between the sidewalk and the parking lot to help screen that as well.
Okay. Just a reminder of my objections to the area of the site. Just reiterating again, but I just want to make sure that everyone is safe in that area.
Thank you.
And just to wrap it up on my end, Major, thank you for what you do. You and your staff and your team and your board are incredibly dedicated to the betterment of our community with sacrifice and selflessness to care for those who are in great need. And we know this time of year particularly that it's, you know, we hear those ringing bells and it reminds us of our own blessings, but also reminds us of the need to care for those who have, have real, real needs. And so I thank you and your staff and your boards dedication to providing service to people who are in dire straits and providing not only immediate care, but also creating a beautiful facility where people can come to a dignified place and get, like you said, the help that they need to find long-term financial security and stability. So much appreciation for you.
Thank you.
And I want to give a big shout-out to our mayor, who led the effort with other McLennan County mayors to put on the apron and ring the bell and draw attention to the need for fundraising for charity at Christmas time. So thanks to Mayor Dillon-Meek on that.
I did not win the mayor challenge, but, but yeah, it was a real honor to get to participate. It was, it was a real honor to get to participate, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Major.
How did you not win?
I know.
We got to talk about this.
I know.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure our next, I'm sure our next mayor will be more competitive.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, I just-
I will note that Jennifer did come and give.
Well, just so you know, she did note that to me when I asked a question.
I also encouraged him to stop by.
Did you stop by? I gave online. Our next work session is Work Session 1033. That's a discussion and update on current and prior projects within the city's CIP or Capital Improvement Program. We've got Nick Sarpy, our Chief Financial Officer, as well as Derek Goldman here, our Facilities Director, at the table to walk through some highlights, some, some great completed projects, as well as a few that are just getting started that we're excited about. And I think both the community and council will be proud of the work that's being done. Guys?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Bradley said, we're here to give you our quarterly update on capital projects. And Derek and I will try our best to get through all of these and answer any questions that you may have. All right. So as Bradley mentioned, we're going to have four different sections of projects. We're going to talk about our completed or substantially complete projects, projects that are in progress, ones that are just beginning, and the ones that are in design, planning, permitting stage. All right, so we'll jump into the completed or substantially completed projects.
The first project we're going to be looking at today is the police tower glass replacement project. That project is now substantially complete. The contractor was issued the notice to proceed originally on that project in December of 2021 to begin the shop drawings and material fabrication. As then in September of 2022, they were able to mobilize and start setting up all of their equipment to start changing out the glass on that facility and then installed that final piece of glass in November, November 29th of 2023. So just a couple of weeks ago, we put the last pane of glass in that building. And if you haven't been by, I highly recommend it. It looks quite nice and we, we expect to see a substantial increase in the energy efficiency of that facility. There's a very nice beauty you can see as well.
I drive by that twice a day and it is beautiful. It is remarkable how much better it looks. Yeah. It is a substantial improvement.
They would make that big of a difference, or I didn't, and it, it just looks so great.
I wish we had a side-by-side so we could see that, that sort of-
Do you not see the flips just now?
I mean, I saw that, but you know, like a still.
Yeah.
You know, get that.
Looks great.
It really does. About the, I can only imagine the energy efficiency savings that are going to be there. I visited one afternoon and during the summer and was on an office that faced the west of the building and, and I feel like I got like a sunburn being in there. So this is great.
All right, so Airport Road. So this project is at the Punch List final closeout phase. The project was estimated to be completed in February of 2024. And they have reached substantial completion just recently on this project, yesterday potentially, based on the last information we've received from Hope Works. And so this one shows some before pictures of different aspects of the project, as well as the final pictures.
The HOT soccer families are going to be quite, quite happy about that.
They juiced it on pickles.
All right, so then Elm Avenue. So it is in Punch List final closeout as well. And some before pictures and some after pictures for the same locations on Elm. Mars and Old Hewitt, so it is 90% complete. They're still working through it and hope to be finished here in the next couple of months with final completion. They're still working on some drainage issues and some work on Old Hewitt. So some before pictures and video. Unfortunately, no sound on this one.
Josh, can you just like hum that? Boom ba-dum ba-dum?
I'll, I'll be the musical accompaniment. I would say one of the concerns before this was done that I would hear and that others on city staff and council would hear from, from parents and educators was the danger of Mars and Old Hewitt in terms of, there were a lot of pedestrian students going to school without sidewalks. And those sidewalks have been a major safety improvement in addition to just the roadway improvement for all that traffic that Midway High sees. So grateful for that inclusion. I know, I remember seeing Bradley Fordwin's Assistant City Manager, you know, making sure the fund, ensuring the funding at board meetings and, and other things to make sure that this gets done. And this was a major gift to West Waco and to the Midway School District. And they came and gave a nice thanks for that. So grateful for city staff getting this done and the safety improvements are, are huge here.
Are we going to get to see the good video? Because that was the-
I was confused about the safety components.
Here we go. There we go. But yeah, people are using that to run on in addition to travel as well.
That looks great.
Yeah. Big for the industrial district, too.
Yeah, this project had been talked about for, before I got on council, certainly.
Continue to hear a lot of commentary from people saying how glad they are that this is done.
And just some images. So this one shows like the sidewalk with the railing that they just installed within the last couple of weeks on Mars Drive. All right, Fifth Street. So it is in project audit and closeout phase and should be pretty much wrapped up as of Some just images of some, a little bit of the before, during construction work and then what the road looks like presently. All right, so Doris Miller, the Community Center renovation. So the interior renovation is complete. The HVAC was installed last month as part of the project.
A round of applause for that.
And at this point, they're looking at phase two of the project and what that looks like. And some before pictures of what it looked like when we took over the building and then what it looks like now after all the renovation that Derek and his team helped laid. All right, so our in-progress projects.
Okay, so the first in-progress project that we're going to look at is the Cameron Park Zoo, the education center and vet hospital. This project is currently under construction. The construction phase is at approximately 30% right now, which translates to an overall project completion of roughly 76% when you consider design and all the other work that had to go into it to get to this point in time. That design began back in 2021 in June, on June 22nd, and construction began February 6th, 2023. We estimate the substantial completion to be in June of 2024, at which time the contractor will begin installing the medical equipment and the furniture in anticipation of an early July final completion. There's a couple of photos here that I believe the council has seen all the renderings that we had in early design. So we, we took the opportunity to include a couple of updated photos to kind of give some perspective of what the site looks like now in comparison to some of the renderings that have been seen before. You can see here the, the large windows that are along the front of the building. And then in the next photo, it's kind of the other side of the wall. If you don't mind flipping, there we go. It's the other side of the wall there where there will be a corridor and some opportunity to showcase some artwork alongside, along that wall there. This next one is the large windows, the large storefront that's in the, in the roof there that kind of leads some, a lot of natural light into the lobby going between the classroom areas and the back of house and the office areas, as well as the public restrooms. And then this is the overall progress of the current, of the site. I can tell you that we were, we were there earlier today for an update meeting. And even though this picture is only a few days old, the progress is going so quickly there that the, the roof structure on the hospital building that you can see there in the back where it, it appears that it's about 50% there, they're already putting decking on that roof now. So it is moving along quite, quite quickly at this phase. The second project that's going on out at the zoo is the Penguin Exhibit. It is also currently under construction and is at approximately 35% constructed, which translates to roughly 74% of the overall project. The design on that project began May 12th of 2022 and construction began in December 22nd, 2022, after the chilly groundbreaking that we had out there. The completion and opening of that exhibit is still anticipated for the summer 2024 season. Both of these projects, there's a timeline here in a little bit, but both of these projects are still slated to be finishing up at about the same time. Again, some images that just give you some perspective of what the site currently looks like compared to some of the renderings that were previously published. Right here, you can see the, the front area where guests will be able to view the exhibit. The columns that you're seeing there are what appear to be trees. They'll, they'll be wrapped to look like trees there. They hold the glass for the front of the exhibit. This is the back, back of house area from the service road. On the left there, you'll see the Penguin Night House being, the slab, which has actually been poured since this was taken just a few days ago. And then the night, the life support building on the other side. And then this last, oh, this is where they were pouring, pouring that concrete that I was just referring to. This last one, this is the Blackfooted Cabin Exhibit. The walls are up, the roof is on. They're getting ready to set the- They're getting ready to set the skylights, and they're doing interior framing of that structure now. And you can also see the restroom rendevale where we'll have that thatch roof, that first, first layer, you can kind of see that band that will continue all the way up the roof. And as of earlier today, that most of that roof is on, and it looks quite remarkable. I'm excited for council and the public to be able to go see some of the unique architecture that's going in out there. Here's the timeline that I was referring to earlier where you can see the general progress thus far since we've started construction in late 22 or early 20, earlier this year. We are looking, we're coming out of the ground right now, obviously on both projects and about to start moving kind of towards the interior of the building. So once the exteriors are wrapped up and we move internal, it will look like things are slowing down, but I can assure you they, they definitely are not. And they both are on track right now to be wrapped up towards the summer and be ready for the summer of 24.
All right, so Riverside Generators and the Central Treatment, Waste Water Treatment Plant generators. So the generators have been ordered. They were placed on order in August of 2022. The timeline for the generators because of their size is about 16 to 18 months. So we're hopeful to get them in spring of 2024 to begin the process of actually installing them with the hope of having them installed by the end of October of 2024. So the ordering just gets us the generators, and then we'll have to do a contract for the actual installation of them, which that will come back to council for your approval. For this project, we're a little bit behind the original schedule, which was, had a planned due date of April 2024, but because of the size of generators and just supply chain issues, that's been pushed back just a little bit.
So I mean, it looks like from kind of date of order, it's over two years. Was that a supply chain thing with this?
So we ordered in August of 2022, so it's about 16 to 18 months, so February and.
For them to construct the generators before they deliver them.
Yep, because of their size, in order to ensure that there's adequate power. So if there is a power outage that they can supply water to the residents, public, in the event that we need to do that, they have to be quite large to ensure we have enough capacity and flow to do that. All right, so our just beginning projects.
Okay, our just now starting, one of our first just now starting projects is Fire Station 15. This project is now under construction, although work has just begun only within the last couple of days. The design on that project began on October 17th of 2022, and the construction notice to proceed was issued December 11th of 2023, so just, just a couple of, couple of days ago now. Substantial completion is anticipated by March of 2025. Unfortunately, we don't have any fun construction pictures to show quite yet because it's just a little bit of dirt work out there. And, but the next, the next picture is just the layout of the station, which I believe everyone has seen, but this station will accommodate three shifts of eight. There will be individual sleeping quarters for each person as well as a Jack and Jill style bathroom facility between them. It will be for three bays at this location there at Pantherway. And then just a timeline, just to show, kind of give some perspective of where we are in this project. So although we just began construction, we're about 50% of the project thus far through the design process and should anticipate being fully complete there in March of 25.
This is a great addition out to West Waco in terms of public safety in that it will continue to help us hit our target of response time to fires out there and other emergencies. So really looking forward to this getting underway.
All right, the MSW 2400 landfill, so the new landfill. So this project is in design slash construction. So there's different components to this project. So in design for the overall development of the landfill, but in construction for the entrance road. We did receive those permits from TCQ to begin the process of developing this landfill. And for our Sector 1, that one actually is in the RFB process right now as we begin developing the actual landfill facility. And some, here are some pictures of the site where they're doing some of the work for the entrance road and planning for the future landfill. And so you'll see a couple of these as we talk about some solid waste projects. So this shows kind of the timeline of this particular project. So for MSW 24, of when they plan to do the different phases of the project, ultimately with waste being accepted, May, June of 2025. All right, so our projects in design, planning, and permitting stage.
The first project that we're going to talk about as far as for planning is going to be Fire Station number four, which is slated to be relocated to the LaSalle Avenue corridor. This facility is currently, we're currently reviewing a design proposal and intend to bring an award recommendation to council at the beginning of 2024. The intent is to replicate the general layout and provisions that are at Station 15, but we plan to challenge the design team to blend the familiar features of our new fire stations with elements of a mission-style facade for it to, to meet this neighborhood and to blend into this neighborhood as well. We anticipate that design will start in February of 2024, and construction RFPs should be issued in the beginning of '25 with a notice to proceed by approximately mid-year. Their current estimated construction completion is by August of '26, provided that there are no major interruptions to the project.
What's the intersection here? Is that, what intersection is this?
I believe that is Eighth and LaSalle.
LaSalle, got it, got it, got it, got it. Perfect, yep. I don't know what I was thinking. Of course.
And then this is a general.
It's like the Lord of my office.
It's a general timeline here just to kind of illustrate the overall process of how, how we go from the initial design all the way through completion.
Alice's, is four at 10th and Spate right now, like a couple of blocks south of campus there? Is, is Fire Station Four just south of?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's.
The little one.
Into the Baylor Residential area.
Okay.
They're moving it now.
Out to LaSalle.
So they can, the streets are so narrow in that area. I don't, I don't really understand how the fire trucks get through there in emergencies, especially when folks are parked on the side of the roads. But they do it. They do it.
Okay, another project that we wanted to highlight is the Bloodsoe Miller STEM Center and Cultural Arts Center. This project is currently in the design phase. The notice to proceed was issued to Perkins and Will on October 2nd of this year. Design is roughly 20% complete, and we're currently wrapping up the programming phase of this project. The preliminary schedule anticipates that an interior finish out should be complete by the fall or winter of 2024.
All right, so the City Park at Floyd Casey Development Site. So this one is in the visioning and design phase with the expectation to bring concept plans and the vision back to council in early 2024.
Excited to see that. Thank you, Nick.
All right, so the Riverwalk. So this one's in the design phase. They have 50% construction documents on this one with a plan, completion of this project in 2025, the end of fiscal year 2025. All right, the Solid Waste Transfer Station. So this one is in the permitting phase as well as design for the project. So we've submitted our application to TCQ to transfer it and to be a, to be a transfer station and register it. And so we're waiting for them to hear back from them as far as their approval on making this into a transfer station. So on this one, just like for the new landfill, project schedule for it. So the goal on this one is to have the transfer station complete and ready to accept waste a little bit before MSW 2400 is open, so about two or three months before it. Giving ourselves a little bit of cushion and time as far as the development of this one goes. All right, the Bullhide Creek Waste Water Treatment Expansion. So this project would expand the Bullhide Treatment Plant from one half million gallons per day to four million gallons per day. The project costs for this one are being split between the city, Laurina, and Hewitt. And right now, this one is just in the design phase. All right, so just summarizing everything that we're doing. So just want to add that, you know, staff continues to make good progress on all the projects. Our CIP the last several years have been some of the largest investments that the city has made into its infrastructure and the capital improvements program. And the team's done a really good job of managing the projects, making sure the projects get delivered on time, even as they've been battling rising costs and supply chain issues that they've seen over the last several years. Looking forward to 2024, the CIP for 2024 will set a new bar, probably as the largest in the history of the city. And staff continues to build through this infrastructure investment, a safe and resilient city that enhances the city's quality of life, supports sustainability, and facilitates economic development while fostering a culture of equity and inclusion. And all those items in there are council strategic goals. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
I'll make a quick comment. Great presentation, Nick. This is, and this is only 17 of the projects, right? I mean, and it's, and I've just added them up, and it's like 270 million, and we've got many, many more smaller projects. And this, this goes to, I think this council's commitment to really take a serious look at our infrastructure, where we are, and, and fix it and remediate it. And not only that, too, but as we're doing some of these things to enhance the quality of life also on some of these projects in the parks and the zoo, zoo projects. So I think I applaud the city staff because not only do we have this stack of projects, but we've got to figure out how to fund them, fund them. And it's, it's a neat format you have it in here, too, because it's either cash or bonds or grants or TIF, and how we budget those every year and how we get to just tip of the iceberg that we're seeing here today on large projects in the city of Waco. The funding challenge there and also the sequencing, how you prioritize these just according to the needs that the city has, and in some cases synchronizing, which I think we've been more intentional about synchronizing some of these projects when, for instance, we have a road that needs to be built, and there's also underground infrastructure that needs to be addressed, that we are taking the time to figure out how to do those at the same time instead of going in there and fixing them and then tearing it back up and fixing it again. So I think these are big numbers and, and these are big projects, but I think all of the residents of Waco can take comfort in that these, these are needed giant projects that are going on in Waco right now. Like I say, there's hundreds more that we're working on that are, that are funded in CIP and a bunch that are funded outside of the CIP. But nice, nice presentation. I'd like to bring this in on a, you know, every six months or so. It's kind of a cool way to look at the bigger stuff. And I do like the standardization of the Gantt chart. I had to say that, the Gantt charts are great. But yeah, they kind of give us an idea of where, where we're at and where it's going and the timing. But anyway, great job, Mike.
I mean, I just think this just shows the, all that so many different departments and different people are doing. And I just want to commend you, you two specifically, for working so hard to find a way to accomplish so many amazing projects with diverse scope and skill sets required to achieve the goals that not just this council or senior staff, but this community have for who we want to be and how we want to, how we want to be. And it's remarkable to see the transformation that's occurring in facilities and in infrastructure. And it's not with a lot of hard work, strategic utilization of finances, managing projects is really challenging, and so I really commend your efforts. And I hope that y'all can take gratification in giving a presentation like this where we can just tangibly see the amazing work that's being done to make our city stronger. And it impacts people. I mean, whether it's a sidewalk where people can jog or get safely to school, or a community center where families can gather, school kids can gather after a school day in a safe, beautiful space. It's, it changes trajectories and impacts people in really meaningful ways. And so I just couldn't be more proud of the team that we have that allows us to get a overwhelming presentation of really meaningful projects that is, that are needed. These are, these are not luxury items. This is not icing. We need to have strong infrastructure and well-kept facilities like this, but it's not easy to accomplish it, and I'm really thankful for your efforts.
Mayor and Council, just want to say a thanks to y'all as well. The, Nick, take us back to slide 61, the riverfront. I want to talk through something with the council real quick. One more, advance it one more. No, the other way. Yeah. You know, the, the projects that this team is delivering on your behalf, we're kind of starting to develop a muscle, I would say. And you saw it at the airport with culture and brand and equity and inclusion, and you're seeing it on, it's working its way into other projects as well. And that top right image is based on the feedback from the council, as well as particularly Councilmember Rodriguez, about the inclusion of Sandtown and the history of what was on that site. And of course, you'll see the images on the parking garage at, at the pavilion and things like that, but this is a place where we're developing a muscle to tell stories about Waco and our projects, and that's coming from you guys. And just want to say that's not something that they teach you in city manager school, but we're proud to be delivering projects in that way. So thank you all for your support and continued feedback on how to make things even better.
Well, thank you, Bradley and staff, especially for this area of Sandtown. I have talked to several families, including my family, that all lived around that area, and they always felt like they had been forgotten, that they were part of Waco's history in building the city of Waco. And I told them, no, you have not been forgotten. As soon as that's done, you'll see the area. And several families started crying, and I did, too, but they're, because it brought back so many memories of that area. So thank the staff for that. Really, it's, it's really appreciated, and the families are real touched and grateful for staff remembering and highlighting part of the history of the city of Waco that we were part of. Thank you.
Thanks, council. Thanks for doing this briefing as well, Nick and Derek. All right, our last work session of the day, last but not least, of course. We've got work session 1034. It's the discussion of our Community Health Needs Assessments Result and Strategic Plan. We've got our Health District Director, LaShonda Mallory-Horn here, just going to provide a briefing of the CHNA, the results and next steps, and also, you know, kind of a forward look of how this puzzle piece fits into the strategic planning that she's leading at the Health District. I'm hopeful that LaShonda will introduce her team that's joined her, because I know they had a hand in much of this work and much to be proud of. So LaShonda, you got the mic.
Thank you so much, City Manager Four. Good afternoon, Mayor Meakin, Council. As he mentioned, I definitely want to introduce the people that have joined me today. I want to start with our Assistant Director, Public Health, Miss Stephanie Alvey. Our Health Equity Prevention and Promotion Division Manager, Dana Carpenter, and our Program E evaluator, Dr. Christina Tool. The three of these professionals have really done an excellent role in the work that we needed to get done to get our CHNA completed and our strategic plan implemented. They're all dedicated to helping me make this community the best it can be for our neighbors, friends, and families here at the Waco and McLennan County community, and we want to make sure we try to execute and implement the essential functions and services of public health as legislated by the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 121, which is often cited as the Local Public Health Reorganization Act. The work done by our local public health district that was established in 1984 by the city of Waco, McLennan County, and other incorporated municipalities in the county aims to promote and protect health and prevent disease. Unlike primary care hospitals, our focus. Unlike primary care hospitals, our focus is not on the treatment, but rather on the prevention of diseases, and is rooted in the best practices established by the U.S. Health and Human Services Commission, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, academic researchers and institutions across the country, and the Texas Department of State Health Services. The CDC states that a Community Health Needs Assessment is a systemic process involving the community with the ultimate goal to develop strategies to address the community's health and identified issues. There's not one set methodology for a CHNA. Some take a more qualitative approach relying on interviews, focus groups, or ethnographic studies, while others are quantitative, mainly using a survey, and others use a mix of both methods. Once a methodology is chosen, then the degree of scientific approaches is chosen. Soft sciences often rely on quantitative surveys and methodologies that cannot be replicated. However, they yield high numbers and can be cost-effective. More stringent methodologies can be easily replicated and may take more time and resources. The sampling method is often a larger fa, large factor in the decision. In 2016 and 2013, the CHNAs were completed in partnership with the hospitals and a research center, and they relied on generalized random, random sampling within the population that a third-party research team had access to. While the results provided helpful insight, they are not considered to be representative of all McLennan County residents. Under my leadership and with the charge of, excuse me, with the charge of completing the CHNA fully in-house, a more scientific approach was used. The 2022 CHNA utilized the MITZ method approach with four methodologies and systemic sampling to ensure that the data could be representative of the county and not only those surveyed. This is the first time the health district has completed the CHNA on our own. With the 2019 COVID, excuse me, with the 2019 COVID-19 pandemic ensuing, we fell off cycle with the hospitals, creating the opportunity for us to build capacity within our staff and on the data collection process and analysis. This CHNA used the CASPER, a community survey, focus groups, and key informant interviews to understand the needs of the community and develop strategies to address the community's health and identified issues. The Community Assessment for Public Health Emergency Response, mostly referred to as a CASPER, is a type of rapid needs assessment developed by the CDC. It's known for providing generalizable and timely data at a low cost, reported in a simple format. A traditional CASPER is comprised of 30 clusters, and the clusters are non-overlapping geographic areas with housing information available. Census tracts are most often used. Seven interviews are completed per cluster. Modifications are allowed as needed and approved and must be described as such. With a minimum of 80% completion rate, the information is considered representative of the sampled population. For this CHNA, the sample area is all census tracts within McLennan County. With approval from CDC and assistance from the Texas Department of State Health Services, the CASPER methodology was modified to ensure better representation of rural communities. In a traditional CASPER, 30 clusters are chosen at random from the sampling area. In this CASPER, rural and urban tracts were separated and selected at random for those groups. The 16 to 14 ratio was decided based on the proportion of rural and urban census tracts. Following CASPER guidelines, every seventh house was selected for the interview until completion. A four-page questionnaire was developed, which included questions on household demographics, access to care, dental health, community health needs, the COVID-19 pandemic, emergency preparedness, vaccine hesitancy, and mental health. The modified CASPER three-stage cluster sampling methodology was used to select, excuse me, to select a representative sample of households to be interviewed. The sampling frame was identified, was defined as all occupied households within McLennan County according to the 2010 U.S. Census. Achieving an 88% completion rate, we achieved saturation, and the data is considered representative of the sampled area for McLennan County. This map shows you where our door-to-door survey took place. And during this time, while in the past we would rely heavily on students from Baylor or other volunteers, this, this last CASPER we did, we used all of our staff to do the work. So we all got dressed in our health district t-shirts and went around the community, knocking on doors, meeting our neighbors, and it was a really good experience for most of us. Well, I'm gonna say for all of us. I won't say most. CASPERS are designed to be representative of the entire community sampled, and since we take care of the whole county, we needed to make sure we stretched our, our wings a little bit. And for the areas without any clusters selected, efforts were made to push the community survey and host focus groups. The second phase of our data collection was a community-wide survey. We offered the survey in English and Spanish, online and on paper. Questions from the CASPER and previous CHNAs were used, and the CASPER focused, while the CASPER focused on household-level information, the community survey focused on the individual. The margin of error is a percentage that tells you how much you can expect your survey results to reflect the views of the overall population. The smaller the margin of error, the closer you are to having a exact answer at a given confidence level. The sampling confidence level is a percentage that reveals how confident you can be that the population would select an answer within a certain range. For example, a 95% confidence level means that you can be 95% certain that the results lie between X and Y numbers. So if 80% of people surveyed said blue was their favorite color, and the sample size was statistically significant with 95% certainty, I could state that between 75% and 85% of the people had blue as their favorite color. The community survey reached statistically significant sample population with 495 responses within the target area. Our online survey was shared with organizations such as Transformation Waco, Prosper Waco, Mission Waco, the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension, the Family Abuse Center, Midway ISD, Waco Family Medicine, and Waco ISD. We also included links to the electronic survey and press releases, newsletters, emails, and social media. Advertisements were placed on the health district's Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram accounts, and the city of Waco's Facebook and Instagram, Instagram accounts as well. Advertisements also ran in the city of Waco Waterville. Flyers were placed throughout the county in coffee shops, community centers, recreation centers, gas stations, again, at Waco Family Medicine clinics, and during the 2022 Waco Wonderland Parade, other, in other community partner locations and parked cars. Convenience sampling was done in order to reach vulnerable populations. The surveys were distributed during Waco Family Medicine's weekday, weekend, and after-hours clinics. In part, excuse me, in partnership with the Myer Center, surveys were distributed at the center during the high-trafficed periods in the early mornings and afternoons. Surveys were also distributed during Jubilee Market Health Fair. In partnership with the city of Waco, surveys were distributed during the 2022 Employee Appreciation Event. So our staff really did a pretty good job of getting out and trying to collect surveys. But as you know, a lot of community members are just kind of surveyed out, so we do have people that just don't want to participate. The third phase of the data collection was focus groups, and this is one of two qualitative data collection methods used. This is a qualitative research that focuses on the data that cannot be measured and takes fewer to be significant. The focus groups use an exploratory approach and relied on saturation, meaning all questions were thoroughly explored in detail. I want to make sure I note that we did do two focus groups in Spanish, one at the South Waco Recreation Center and another at Alta Vista Elementary School. In the last phase of data collection, a phenological framework was used. This style of qualitative research focuses on understanding the lived experience. Creswell and Creswell state that three of 10 interviews are, three to 10 interviews are needed for significance. In addition to completing the interview, the preliminary analysis was sent back to the interviewee to ensure that the researcher understood properly. This is a form of data validation known as member checking. The results from the two quantitative methods, the CASPER and the community survey, can be, can be used as a, as representative of the county, while the focus groups and key informant interviews allow us to dive deeper into specific areas and understand more. The highlight of the results and where, where they all converge is in identifying the challenges and concerns in the community. You'll see that only the key informants focused on access to care, while mental health and chronic health conditions were seen in every other area. This slide includes direct quotes from our focus group participants and key informant interviews. I like to highlight the quote regarding diabetes, obesity, and heart conditions. It states that diabetes and obesity are, or also, I have heard a lot more about, about us, Latins and Hispanics, about a heart attack or high blood pressure, because there are many people with these conditions that before were never heard of as much. This is exactly in line with what we hear from community members on a daily basis. For my key informants, I want to make sure I acknowledge the lack of access to care statement. It says, "We have resources, we have the good healthcare, we have indigent healthcare, we have the marketplace, but the problem is in reaching the people in a way that they know how to utilize these programs." This emphasizes the need for extensive health literacy efforts in our community. The data collected was synthesized into recommendations. The four areas of recommendations include fostering collaborative dialogue, which include working with our community members and stakeholders. And rather than going into the community and telling them what is wrong and starting, wrong, starting and continuing a conversation for deeper understanding and inviting them to the table is what is needed to help develop solutions. Forming strategic partnerships is very key to the work we do at the health district. We've done a really good job of partnering with organizations, and we're working to share these partnerships across divisions to have a more centralized approach. Evaluating diverse outcome measures. There are standard measures like demographics and weight, and there are harder-to-quantify measures like happiness and satisfaction. The result shows us we need to broaden the information we are collecting and have a better understanding of the full picture of our community's health. And addressing chronic conditions. We already have a couple of grants and programs that focus on this, such as our Let's Walk Waco Eight Week Walking Challenge, so is looking at the opportunity to expand the work and reach more people. Next steps. Sharing the results of our CHNA is crucial because it promotes transparency, fosters community engagement, and enables stakeholders to collaboratively address the most pressing health issues within our community. We will utilize a multi-pronged approach for sharing the results. This approach will include presenting to the McLennan County Commissioners Courts, to our funded cities, publishing the report on our website, and promoting it within the community. By combining various communication channels, we can reach a broader audience, ensure inclusivity, and encourage active participation from diverse stakeholders in our efforts to create a healthier and more equitable environment for all. Our next step is to develop a Community Health Improvement Plan, also referred to as a CHIP, which is a long-term systematic effort to address public health problems based on the results of the CHNA. This plan will be used to set priorities, coordinate resources, develop policies, and define actions to target efforts to promote health. Additional net steps include prioritizing the health issues, developing the Community Health Improvement Plan, which will include clearly defining the goal or vision of the plan, also organizing the plan, which involves the logistics and the organization, organizational aspects of implementing the improvement plan, which means we'll set some timelines, allocate responsibilities, and create a cohesive, cohesive structure for the plan's execution. Our community will be engaged during this process because we need the community's input to make sure that our stakeholders and partners have a voice to the work we're doing. We'll have meetings, workshops, and public forums to gather this information. We'll implement the plan and monitor the progress to, during the, excuse me, implementing the plan and monitoring the progress is a substantial phase, and it involves implementing strategies, coordinating various interventions, and continuously tracking outcomes and performance indicators. An evaluation is critical for accessing the effectiveness of the plan. This phase involves measuring the impact of interventions, identifying strengths and weaknesses, and making data-driven adjustments to improve the plan's performance. The health district is currently seeking out a contractor to assist us with the development of the CHIP. All right, let me take a breath. Lots of words. So now I'll talk to y'all about some work that Stephanie has really led in our health district, and I'm really proud of what she's done. As you can see from the CHNA results, we have a, a lot of work ahead of us to do, and we want to make sure we're strategic in doing the work and position ourselves to be successful in, in addressing the health district's needs. So the health district adopted a strategic plan back in 2019, and this plan was developed using various sources of input from the community and our staff. We held listening sessions with staff and leadership, trained our community members to conduct front porch conversations with their friends and neighbors, and conducted stakeholder interviews, all aimed at helping us to understand what the perceived health issues were for the community, and specifically how the health district could help meet those needs. These efforts provided information about how the health district is perceived, both internally and externally, and resulted in the strategic plan that gave us concrete data inform, information about how we could move forward and create an organization that could best serve our staff and our community. It set our mission to improve the health and well-being of the citizens of and environment of our county, and our vision to create the healthiest county in Texas where all people can live, work, play, and thrive. In 2019, the strategic plan was designed to help carry the health district through the upcoming retirement of then-director Sherry Williams, and transition them to new leadership and the organizational change that would come. And then I need a council member, Boarderu, to do a dum-dum-dum, the pandemic happened.
Dum-dum-dum.
Thank you. So we have a few goals that we identified in our strategic plan, and none of these are necessarily more important than the other, but they all do build upon each other. We know that without a strong workforce, we can't build a high-performing organization. And if the organization isn't performing, then we aren't, we aren't illustrating value. And if we aren't illustrating value and garnering funding, then we can't design and implement, implement initiatives to improve health. These four goals touch upon those four areas of the organization that need to be successful in order for the organization to thrive. Within each of these four goals, we have created a set of objectives and lead-in lab measures to ensure that we are meeting these goals. And starting this past month, we started collecting some of our metrics and data points, so we're excited to see how they come through. The strategic plan is the big picture of what we hope to do, how we hope to do it, and how we will know it is done. To effectively develop the strategic plan, we need to collect data and identify standards and best practices. The public health accreditation process ensures that we use data-driven approaches to, and perform at the highest standard, providing the best to our community. The Community Health Needs Assessment, done every three years, is our opportunity to check the pulse on the community directly. As professionals, we, excuse me, as professionals, we can look at the data and determine, and determine the problems. And then, but we also have to listen to the community to understand the correlations and the causes. From the information collected with the CHNA, a CHIP is developed, and the CHIP is our guide and plan to systemic, to systemically address a need or issue. The CHNA CHIP in the FAB process drive the development and implementation of our strategic plan. Our strategic timeline includes several significant initiatives over the next few years. At the end of fiscal year 23, we wrapped up our CHNA and the development of our strategic action, action plan, which includes the goals, objectives, and measures that I mentioned previously. In FY '24, we will be developing a CHIP, implementing our strategic action plan, and assess our readiness for accreditation. In FY '25, we will be able to implement our CHIP and apply for the Pathways Recognition Program, which is a precursor to full accreditation. And we also expect to start developing a new strategic plan in FY '25. And by FY '26, we will start the process all over again by conducting another Community Health Needs Assessment. One lesson learned is that during this process of trying to do the CHNA in-house, we, we recognized that this is not a good idea. It was a lot of work, and we couldn't dedicate all the staff time to just doing the CHNA. In the process of that, we had several significant outbreaks with Legionella and an issue with E. coli at a pool, and, you know, that pulled our Epi and Data Team away from doing this CHNA work to really respond to that, and we have to make sure we're doing the public health work first, so we'll probably have to use some outside support moving forward. The health district has been working very hard post-pandemic to grow and strengthen the public health district. We are taking our mission of improving the health of McLennan County residents very seriously, and both the CHNA and our strategic planning efforts would not be possible without the hard work and dedication of our amazing team. I want to publicly thank them for their efforts and flexibility as we've thrown these significant projects at them over the last year. And as always, I would like to thank Deputy City Manager Deidre Emerson and City Manager Bradley Ford for the continued support of the health district. And I'm open to any questions.
Any questions, comments?
Any questions or comments?
I just want to extend gratitude and thank you for the hard work that went into gathering these results. It's never easy. I think everyone up here at the DAS can tell you that going door-to-door and talking to strangers is never easy. So, we thank you for that, and going door-to-door and talking to strangers when you need information from them is even more difficult. So, we appreciate your resilience in that and your leadership and direction. Hoping for a follow-up at some point next year for things we've implemented to improve outcomes from concerns that we've seen, and I'm sure we can get something in the works for that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, grateful for all your hard work. There's nothing like knocking on a door and saying, "We're from the government, and we need some information." That just gets people to really open up, but appreciate you and your team's hard work in putting this together, LaShonda.
Thank you.
Yeah, Director Mallory Horn, thanks to you and your team for putting this together. Healthcare right now is so complex. I mean, the private sector and the public health, now that fits together and how expensive that it's gotten. I appreciate your leadership on this, and I like your process too about gathering the data and your goal about making McLennan County the healthiest county in Texas. I think that's important. That's a good goal to have. The one, maybe I don't want to dive into the weeds on this, but I do, I was kind of fascinated by the results page that in the different, in the different data that you pulled in, that mental health, diabetes, and obesity were kind of across the board, right at the top. And I guess that's what I wanted to ask. Again, I don't want to get in the weeds on it, but are these like frequency, magnitude? Were those the top three? I mean, you have them on the top three, but I didn't know if that was just...
Yes, sir. So, based on the results from the surveys, these are the top health concerns that rose to the top. And the way that the question was worded on the CASPER, for instance, it asked, I could tell you, it says, "What are the biggest challenges in your neighborhood?" Well, that was, excuse me, let me find the health question. What are the most important health issues in our community? And so, we had a list of different things that they could choose. They could choose as many options as they want, and we basically just analyzed the data based on what their responses were, and these are the things that rose to the top. We weren't very surprised at the results because we see the community every day. We pay attention to the data and what's happening. We share information back and forth with Waco Family Medicine regularly around chronic conditions. But the mental health aspect is the part that I think we saw, I'm going to say like my opinion personally, is I think that post-pandemic, our communities have struggled. We had a lot of people isolated, we had families impacted in ways that never been impacted before. And so, I think that us showing up at their door, asking these questions, we had a lot of people just telling us, like, "This has been hard. This has been a really hard time," especially senior adults. So, I think it's really important for us to offer a level of community care that hasn't been offered in the past, and I think that by us knowing that these are the issues, we had already started the process of our behavioral, excuse me, mental health access program, which is a database that we partnered with the San Antonio Resource Directory to make available for community members. We have access to another behavioral health tool called Behavioral Health 360 that we want to make available to community members in the next year or so. So, I think we are already thinking about it, but this just made it even more real to us.
Thanks again. Great, great report, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you for this report. Being out there in the community every day is not always easy, and I appreciate the work that you and your staff are doing for the healthcare and mental healthcare of our county and our city, basically. So, thank you for the work that you've done. This report is awesome, and I know it's a lot of work, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the presentation. The information is always impactful, and I appreciate you and the staff's dedication to the wellness and health of this community. I don't know if it was anywhere in any of the assessments and information how, and I know pre-COVID, the use of community health workers and the impact that they made was pretty significant, and I don't know if this assessment included that maybe coming back online or if it didn't, and if so, because I know you mentioned community care, and I think that that's proven, from what I've seen, between that and just some of the programmatic offerings that the health district had pre-pandemic, I think made a bigger impact just to know that, a reminder for our communities that, oh, this institution is here, and these things are available. Because I mean, if I don't need a birth certificate, a death certificate, you know, the immunization, you know, the vaccine, all of those things are available, but you know, the Move Waco programming and that kind of thing was just another, a little reminder, a gentle reminder in how we can, as a people, as a community, care for one another if in this assessment, those things will be coming back online.
Absolutely. So, we had already hired two additional community health workers. Both of them are local to Waco, and one is bilingual, and she's been doing one of our chronic disease self-management courses at LaPorta? Is that what she's going to name it? At LaPorta? And she's done a really great job, and we're hoping to hold on to her as long as possible because she's young and ambitious, and we don't want to lose her. We also just recently finished the interview process for a Community Health and Wellness Initiatives Coordinator. That'll be really leading some of the outwardly facing community work that would do exactly the things you're speaking of, Councilmember Bearfield. So, we're trying to get back to doing that pre-pandemic public health work, the work that's fun, the work that makes this kind of career that you want to stick around in. It's just slow, kind of getting everybody back on track, but we're getting there.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like getting back to that pre-pandemic work. In some ways, COVID feels like a lifetime ago, and then some days it feels like the nightmare we had just yesterday, and I still am so grateful for y'all's work through that. This is really, really important information that we're going to be able to carry, and it took a lot of hard work to get it. And so, I just want to pause and say thank you for the strategic approach that you all took to really getting good information, and I can't wait to see where we go with this and all the good work that's going to continue to come out of our health district. My councilmembers have said it better than me, but really grateful for you and look forward to seeing this being put into action. So, thanks so much, Cass.
Thank you so much.
Can we talk through the public hearing today?
We are not. We're gonna, we have a need for executive session, I believe, and Clint will cover the public hearings later at the six o'clock.
Great. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session is read into the record by the City Secretary at 4:40 p.m.
Notices hereby given that the City Council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Rural Property Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and Economic Development Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.